At least for, at least for a year.
Would that be inappropriate in any way, Mr. Wilson?
Well, the senior discount program, as set by ordinance, is there's certain age requirements or disability requirements and certain income thresholds that you'd have to meet.
Sure.
So, putting that $5,000 in here wouldn't change.
Wouldn't change.
Wouldn't change the funding, it wouldn't change the threshold, it wouldn't change the age requirement. And currently, it's in the budget for $5 off your water portion of your bill and $5 off your sewer portion of the bill.
But that would...
Mr. Alderman Roy Wesley?
I like the "Mr." So, instead of $5, we would put $7.
Right.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know how much $5,000 would cover. That's my point.
So, if we double the amount of the line item, then theoretically, couldn't we say, instead of $5,000 each, it would be, instead of $5 each, it would be $10 each? And change the ordinance? Or $7, or whatever the case is. Alderman Roy Wesley?
The only reason why I bring this up for seniors and stuff, I know everyone's having hard times and everything, but seniors can't collect unemployment and stuff like that.
Right.
And their pension has not got any money, Social Security hasn't got any money, medicine's going up and everything, and that's, any little bit that we could help them in that way, that's what I'm looking at, is seniors.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, again, I mean, you'd have to change the amount of the ordinance from 5 to whatever you want it to be. And like I said, that was, their request was denied a number of months ago, so you'd have to vet that out amongst yourselves again. And additionally, I would probably advise from, or, in my opinion, I would stay away from moving that $5,000 in here. I mean, if you want to up it from 5 to 10, let's just up it from 5 to 10 and then leave that $5,000 out there and just let it balance itself within the fund.
So, I, I'm in agreement with Mr. Wilson. If we're going to do it, it's simply 5 to 10, and let's not debate the $5,000 on where it's coming from here. So, if that's okay?
That's fine. Basically, and this is just for seniors.
Right, and the threshold, so that 89-year-old woman, if she doesn't fit into that category, she's not going to be able to use this service.
Exactly.
But if she does, she's in need and she would get the service, so I think it is very fair. Alderman Roy Wesley?
One more question, and then I'm done.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Promised?
Nope, nope, I'm not promising. What is that threshold of the dollar amount for, I mean, inflation's been going up and income's been going down. Has, when was that last changed? Does it change as the years go on of the poverty level for seniors? You follow what I'm saying on this?
Yeah, I don't remember it changing automatically. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, it, well, it does change annually, quote unquote, over the last couple of years. It hasn't changed a whole lot, I haven't looked in a few months. Right now, the very low income threshold that we're using for a single-person household is just north of $29,000 annual income, and for a two-person or more household, it's right around $32,000.
I'm sorry, I thought Alderman Roy Wesley was asking about the discount, not the...
No, it was, he, he understands me.
Right. I didn't, sorry.
That's okay, a lot of people don't, but that's okay. Thank you.
Sure. Alderman Police?
I don't have a problem with the senior thing, but I think when we were talking about it nine months ago was, I think it was brought up because of hardships or whatnot. It wasn't strictly seniors, and that's why it failed, not because it was for the seniors, it was like for certain hardships or whatnot. I think if, I think if it was senior citizens, I think it would, probably would have passed. But it had other things added to it, from what I recall.
I remember it the way you remember it.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
I'm probably going to crucify up here for my seniors and my award, and I know I will. Just like the vehicle stickers, lady came knocking at my door because I even want to give her a discount on her vehicle stickers, but that ain't the point here. The point here is, I understand the seniors, but we have people out there that we're actually, that they don't have a job, okay? They have a mortgage payment, they lost their job, their unemployment ran out, and we are out there turning these people's waters off, okay? And believe me, I feel hardship, I feel really bad for the seniors, but if you do that, that's time to bring back that policy and look at those people that can't afford to even make our water payment, that we are turning people off because they can't make it anymore in this community the way it is. If you're going to do something like that, I'm sorry. We need to do it across the board and make criterias on people that lost their job, that unemployment is being cut off right now for half these people in town. I'll tell you that right now, because their span is out, there's no money available anymore, they can't find a job, and they cut it out after so long. If you want to do that for seniors, then God, guys, do it for the other people that can't do it, because we are cutting off, turning off people's water because they get so high that they can't afford the water, but if you give one discount, and I guarantee you, I'm going to get a phone call tomorrow saying, "Well, you're picking on the seniors," all right? I'm not picking on the seniors. The seniors are entitled, but in the long run, it also needs to look at the other people that can't do it either in this town. I mean, you got to think of everyone else in this town. I just can't sit up here every time, and I'm not, believe me, I'm not against the seniors. I just want to make that perfectly clear before they come knocking at my doors tomorrow. I'm just saying is that we need to look at all, across the board, guys, you just can't pick the seniors out there. I got little old ladies, you know, I agree, but I got people that lost their job and they can't make their mortgage.
They're not old ladies, they're elderly ladies.
I'm just saying, though, I think we need to, we need to look at it across the board, bottom line.
Okay, so, I supported the, nine months ago, when we were looking at across the board, I support people in need and the senior citizens in need, so, but at the same time, when we did it, tried to do it unilaterally, it failed. And so, what we really need to do is treat them separate. And right now, let's handle the senior line item, and then we can handle another line item. We'll try and do it tonight, and if it doesn't work, then we'll put it on a committee meeting. But in terms of the senior discount line item, Alderman Police?
I just want to follow up to Alderman Wes, Eugene Wesley. That's why I've been saying about the water rates. I understand that the Page Water Commission, 18 to 20 cents, fine. Need to pass that along, I understand. The rest of it, I mean, Brad, on your illustration here, it showed $70.56 extra per year on 6,000 gallons. I agree with Gene, let's, you know, you want to give the seniors a little extra, fine. But let's pass it, hold the line for everybody else. You've got $5, $5.5 million or whatever, I'm not sure the exact number, after next year's project. And when the Page Water Commission comes at us again, we'll have to make a decision. So, it's just like, and not an automatic pass-through. The council, whoever it may be, will have a discussion. That's all I'm asking for.
See, I'm having trouble with the hold the line concept, and I'm going to tell you why, and, and just the council as a whole, that for the current fiscal year that we're in, not the one that we're budgeting for, revenues projected, budgeted for is $6 million for water and sewer, the residents and businesses bringing that money in. The actual of what we're projected to collect is actually $5.8 million. So, right there, there's a downfall. And our expenditures were budgeted at 6.2, just summary, general discussion, no pages, but it, after I'm done speaking, I'll have Mr. Wilson point you to where it is. Expenditures of this current fiscal year, budgeted $6,258, and actually, $6.1 million. So, we are going to spend $300,000 more than we took in in revenues. It's just a function of how things turned out. In this coming fiscal year that we're budgeting for, the expenditure, the revenues are going to be about $5.95 million, so about the same as the $6 million. But we're going to spend $8.6 million. We have to go into our reserves for a couple million dollars because of certain projects that we can't even budget for in a revenue perspective, or else people's water bills will be double of what they are. We have the Addison Road project in this next fiscal year that we have to do, we have to go into our reserves, that was $8 million, now we're taking it down to 6 or 5 and 1/2. That Addison Road project is not budgeted for in the revenues from the cities and in the businesses. Also, the new treatment plant, these revenues that we're pulling in from the water bills don't account for a treatment plant. We still have to figure out how we're going to pay for that. So, I'm having trouble holding the line with all these expenses, it's near impossible to hold the line. And then, lastly, the future projects, that right now, we're going to do a study to see what real work is needed on our aged infrastructure, or an aged community. And after that report, we're going to have a lot more to look at where these revenues only fund a million or a million and a half of sewers a year. And, and that's my overview. So, with that, if, if there's a specific question for, for Mr. Wilson, I, on where they are in the book, I don't know, page 182 or?
Combination 182 and 183.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
You know, I'm talking about seniors because the seniors can't, they, they can't go out and get a job like a 25-year-old can. And we're talking hardship. A person making, say they're making $125,000, they lose their job, and they're gaining unemployment. They don't want to take a job for $50,000 because we're making $125,000. And so, if they, if their unemployment runs out because they can't find a job for 20, for $50,000, and they're gaining unemployment for, on $125,000, well, is that a hardship? Depends how you look at this. A person gaining unemployment on $50,000, on $125,000, he's going to take home more than what I'm out there working for. And I, I get living within my means and stuff, but the seniors, they have it a lot more difficult. They can't go lifting up boxes at UPS, and, and some of them probably can, do a better job than me, but it's harder for them. And all they have is the federal government. They don't have pensions, a lot of them, they just have Social Security.
Are you going to make a motion, Alderman Roy Wesley?
I'll make a motion to accept the, I make a motion to move from, from $7,000 to $10,000 for seniors. Or, yes.
No, if you have to, it's 12.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It might be easier just to double it to the 14.
Okay, can we go to Brad?
Mr. Wilson?
Well, yeah, I was going to say, I mean, it, it's currently at $5 per month. The easiest is to give me what you want it to be, that way we can fix the ordinance and program it in here appropriately. So, if you want it to be $7, okay, fine, if you want it to be 10, I mean, and obviously, we'd have to, to correct the code as well.
I'll make a motion, I'll go with 10.
10 and 10?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second and a question.
So, are we going 20? You just said 10 and 10.
10 for water, 10 for sewer, instead of 5 and 5. So, we're going 20, to make a difference.
With not a, with not a hardship down the line for a person that maybe only made $40,000 on a job and then, I mean, I...
Right, just to make a difference tonight, we're going to have to handle them as two separate discussions.
But again, you're doing two, you know what? I'm going to pass this because, because it's seniors and I'll get beat up for it, so, but I, I just really think we need to reconsider down the line for other people that come knocking at my door, that, you know, they had a $45,000 job and they lost their job, and they in the same situation. You know what, I'll support the senior again, but I think down the line here, we really need to revisit some other, other topics for other people in this town, because it's just not seniors that live in this town, and we need to look at it across the board for everyone. I'll support the senior discount again, because again, I know what's going to happen, fine.
Under items to be considered, at the end of this meeting, mention it, and we will put it on there, and we will discuss that.
You're talking the budget now, so, I mean, obviously, you didn't go in this year's budget.
Well, then, let's talk about it right after we end this conversation. Mr. Wilson?
I want a clarification. The, the way it's set up now is it's $5 for the water and $5 for the garbage.
Oh.
So, the sewer doesn't actually, yeah, the sewer doesn't play in that equation at all.
So, 10 and 10? We'll say $10 for water and $10 for garbage in the ordinance?
That's up to the seven of you, I mean, we were just talking about the water portion of it, so.
Okay, let's just stick to the water portion, then.
And then, and then, you are correct. At a future committee meeting, we will bring back some ideas for other hardship considerations.
Okay.
So, that, unfortunately, I think that conversation is too verbose for tonight, especially with not having anything in front of us, so, while I agree it's a good idea to discuss that, it'd be too free-form tonight to make any, personally, I feel it'd be too free-form to make any material progress on that particular topic, so.
Okay, it's fair enough, fair enough. I can see why you're saying that. Alderman Roy Wesley?
Even if we don't talk about the hardship tonight, we could also always amend this budget at any time.
Right.
And do it at that time.
Okay, so, your motion was to go from 5 to 10, you're amending your motion?
Yes.
Back to 10 on the water bill that you amended.
On the water bill, okay. Anything else on the question?
I accept his amendment.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, and a question, one more question for Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Let me make sure I get this, so, we're giving a $10, if I am mistaken, we're giving a $10 break now for water? Am I correct? And not the garbage?
For a senior citizen, who qualifies?
Not the garbage.
And not the garbage, for a senior citizen, that qualifies. There's a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
How about a roll call?
Okay, I'll do, we can do a roll call. Ms. Malone, will you do a roll call?
Alderman Moton?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Our Alderman Coles?
Oh.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Kadala?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes, and please don't come knocking at my door.
Alderman Winger?
Yes. Motion passes. Is there any other discussion in this fund? Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion to accept this fund as presented and amended with the $5 to $10.
A second.
Seeing a look of, Mr. Wilson?
Just a quick clarification, these two pages actually have summary presentation for the actual departmental budget, so if you make that motion, then we're done talking for the night effectively, because we haven't gone through the actual departments, or the actual, yeah, the actual departments within the water fund.
I think that, thank you for bringing that up, but, I mean, that's a great point. We've discussed at high level all the other items, so, I'm okay with that. Does anyone object? We've just went through all the different sections of these few tabs. Okay, so...
I'll make that motion.
Do I have any objections? Mr. Police?
Don't we have a discussion on the mechanic that was an expanded, I don't know, that was, added, the added vehicle, right, to the fleet? And then, there's a mechanic discussion, I thought, right?
Now, I believe that, I'm willing to discuss it, I think it was in a fund that we already went through.
The mechanic?
And it, where is that mechanic? It's in a fund we did last?
No, the expanded level's in the plant maintenance division within the water fund.
Okay, then, it, under maintenance division, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, I definitely agree, we need to have that conversation. How about if we approve page 182, this section, with the exception of the maintenance division? It, is that agreeable, Alderman Police?
Well, I think, I don't know, I think it's their call. They look a little confused, I'm not sure.
I think Mr. Wilson is willing to let us approve this tab, and it represents all the other tabs in the water sewer, with the exception of maintenance division. Are you okay with that?
If, if you guys will unilaterally approve the other three divisions, I'm not going to argue with you.
He doesn't even believe what's happening, look, he's in shock, he can't have a decision, he doesn't know what to make of this.
She can't, she's so screwed up.
Okay, I'm going to look at one question, and then I'm going to make a motion. Alderman Coles?
All right, you're talking about giving five, extra $5 to the senior, all right? You didn't say if the guy, if a senior makes $50,000 a year, is he going to get, is he going to get the extra $5? No. Is a senior that, two seniors that live together that aren't married, and there's two, two living in a house, do you consider giving them $20 because there's two seniors living in a house? All of them things going to come in, that's the reason why I said no. I mean, you're, you're changing things around here that before you're done, you don't even know which way's up and which way's down. So, I, I believe you're going to run into trouble because, that's why I said no. But that's the only reason why. I realize the seniors have to have a break, also, the people that don't work are unemployed. There's a lot of people in this city that don't have a job, that are, are work, trying to find jobs that they can't, all their funds are all ran out already, and you, you're worrying about $5 to give to the seniors. You should give $5 and turn the people's waters on.
Just for clarification, we're updating an ordinance where...
I know, I know you're updating an ordinance, and the ordinance is, is, okay, you, it's going to be jazzed up when it comes back, excuse me, but that's, that's the way I feel.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the, the section water sewer fund summary with the exception of the revision that will be made based on the prior motion from 5 to 10 on the senior discount, and with the exception of removing the maintenance division.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a question, Alderman Police?
So, but we're, basically, we're leaving the water rates, the next two water rates, May 1st this year and next year, they're staying in. Is, am I understanding correctly?
That's my understanding, Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
That would be my understanding, based upon that motion, yes.
Okay. So, there's a first and a second, anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
When opposition, motion carries. Next item is, and the final item, Mr. Wilson, is the maintenance division. And with this, let's have a little discussion on it. Any questions, comments on this? I don't think this is the one.
Yeah, the, the item that was in question that Alderman Police brought up is on page 198.
Thank you.
And it's on the screen there as well for you.
I might have moved a few of my pages around. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Okay. 198, it's to extend the, a maintenance mechanic in the public works division, I mean, maintenance division. I will sit up here and strongly suggest that we pass this due to the fact is that if anyone goes over there and look at all the stuff that is coming in to the city with our new vehicles, that we got to get lights put in, the radios put in, and all that. Keep in mind, the maintenance division just do not work on our big trucks and that, they maintain the snow blowers, all the lawnmowers, everything else there. When a guy goes on vacation, we're backed up in projects, we have trucks waiting to get repaired, we have one truck still waiting that we got delivery on, that is still in a shop that is not ready to go yet, and I believe we're waiting for some parts on that, but that is going to take some time to do. I have supported this mechanic in the past, due to the fact is that the work is building up more and more. And when we have a snowplow operation, if we have vehicles break down, we got to call someone in, repair that in overtime. We did get to the point that, at one time, we did work our mechanic on a Saturday, which yes, it came down to overtime. There are situations that might come down to overtime on mechanics, no doubt about it. But I think in the cost savings in this community, to keep our equipments up and running to the best ability, again, I will sit here and strongly suggest on this council that we pass this mechanic, new mechanic in this division. I'll tell you, you guys need to, if you don't believe we don't need this mechanic, everyone in this council need to go over to that building and look at these trucks that they'd work on, and equipment that's sitting there that we have to maintain in this community. I mean, besides, besides our public works, we do squad cars, generators, everything that, all our vehicles. So, I will sit here and I will support this mechanic because we do need it this time.
Alderman Police?
Jen, I remember this from last year, we had a long discussion on it. The thing was, when it came down, when we asked, I know some work has to be outsourced, we cannot do it in-house, no matter what, and when we asked what the other work, the normal work that this mechanic would be doing versus the $66,000 we see here for the salary and all the benefits and everything, I don't remember, I think last year was like $20,000, I, I remember saying, you know, it might have been 25, but I remember saying, "I'll spend $20,000 before I spend 66." If the numbers changed, that would change my mind, that's all.
Have the numbers changed to increase to $66,000 that I could eliminate from contractual expenses? No. On a straight line? No. They probably won't. It'll probably always be, could I reduce the amount of contractual expenses across just my public works divisions? I'm not talking about police or community development, I haven't really run those numbers. But if I was to reduce the number of public works contractual expenses by $20,000 in a year, and then reduce the amount of downtime, which then equates to service requests being done faster, trucks being down less often, we, us being able to extend the lifespan of our vehicles and equate that to a dollar figure, absolutely, I think I could get to $66,000 a year. could get to sixty-six thousand dollars a year.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
You just said the public works, so are you telling me twenty thousand for public works and maybe another fifteen or something in police squad cars and other city cars? Because it sounds like you broke, we've broken this up in the departments, maybe, uh, maybe I didn't understand you correctly last year.
Community Development really has two new vehicles. Um, they really don't require a lot of maintenance outside of some preventive maintenance, some oil changes. They've got two other vehicles that are an older variety, one's an older squad car, one's an older detective vehicle. Those perhaps we see a little more frequently. The police department, um, you know, contractually, we really don't send those cars out quite a bit for anything unless it's warranty work. Very rarely do we sub one of their vehicles out to a Ford dealership, a Chevy dealership, a Dodge dealership for any work. We normally handle those in-house and that's basically due to the fact of that they need those cars on the road, so they're a first priority. We really don't send those out in great frequency and the only time we do is mainly for body work or painting work, which we wouldn't do in-house anyway. So really, the only thing I could reduce the contractual expenses on would be the vehicles that we send out, because bottom line, we're either A, too busy, or B, we just don't have the time to tie up one of our two mechanics for a week working on a backhoe and doing the wet brakes on that. It takes too much time, it's just, you know, it's counterproductive. For me to have a mechanic spend a week on one vehicle while everything else in the city
I'm having trouble, um, hiring someone in this position, I just am. And in this economy and wages increase, I, you know, said this before and I still feel it as well as that I wanna maintain the workforce we have. I don't wanna have to, you know, start laying off people. So just to protect the workforce we have, I, I don't wanna fill this vacancy. And I, maybe it's a matter of us looking at what do we send out and what don't we and, you know, with the police department being the first in-house thing we do, uh, that's my input. Any other, uh, Alderman Roy Wesley?
Um, on page two oh-one, it said twelve thousand dollars on overtime. Is that for the mechanic?
Mr. Kramer?
Actually, this is not a reflection of vehicle maintenance mechanic, this is a reflection of plant maintenance mechanic. They work on wastewater and water facilities. The reason why we included a vehicle mechanic in this budget is because currently all the mechanic salaries come out of the general fund, even though a large portion of the vehicles that they work on are actually out of the water and sewer fund. So we actually put a vehicle mechanic in the plant maintenance budget to come out of water and sewer fund, opposed to putting a third mechanic in the general fund.
I just wanna add into this. Mr. Kramer's been with us for, what, three years now?
May of, uh, two thousand and eight.
Okay, three years. And I think he's done a terrific job in a position, in his position that he's, he's been doing. This gentleman sits here and works on Saturdays, Sundays, he's been here, um, he's took the city by the horns and done a, a terrific job on what he's doing. And I have a lot of faith in him over, over the last couple of years on his job and we're, we're saying to him that, that he doesn't need the mechanic and I think he does now. I think Mr. Kramer has come across and not wasting any money in this city and he's trying to save every dime. This gentleman is here at, I've seen him here at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, and it's part of his job, true, but have, we gotta put the faith into him and I understand in these tough times of, of the mechanic and stuff, but do we, do we actually know, seeing up on this council, of all the equipment that needs to be repaired? And we've, we've cut things out, out of the city, but he's came up to the plate and even though we cut the fertilizing, we cut and we're doing it in-house, we're getting more equipment. And I have, I'm gonna support this, for this mechanic, because I think he needs it now. And he's gonna get more equipment, he's gonna get, for the fertilizing and for the brush pickup, those, those things still need repaired, so, and, um, that's what I have to say and thank you for doing a decent job, John.
Alderman Kadala?
As much as it agonizes me to say this, I think Alderman Roy Wesley is right.
I'm sorry.
No, I, you know what, in the years John's been here, I don't think he's steered us wrong yet. I, I, I think he's, uh, you know, he's, he's always got the best interest of the, of the city, uh, first and foremost in, in, in his mind and in his endeavors. And if he says that we're gonna, uh, we're gonna lengthen the, uh, the, the lifespan of, of equipment and vehicles and in the long run, we're gonna be better off, I don't think I'm in a position to, uh, to argue that. Well, Alderman Winger's, uh, concerns are valid and I share them. I mean, in this economy to, you know, to, to make a commitment like this with, to an employee is a difficult trigger to pull, but I think, I think, I trust John and, uh, and, and Mr. Kramer's track record speaks for itself, so I'm gonna support this, maybe a bit reluctantly, but I am gonna support this.
Alderman Coles?
This is the same you're asking like you did last year. Last year you asked for him and I believe the year before you asked for a half of one, didn't you?
[laughing]
All right? And, uh, you can't get a mechanic and a half, but, uh, I know what kind of equipment you have, because I did a lot of de-ordering when I had part of it and I've always tried to get you to, to, uh, maintain the things. And I hope someday, Ms. Winger, that you'll have your car at the Lexus dealer and the guy tells you, hey, I'll have your car done, uh, this afternoon. Oh, we, we're too busy today, it'll be tomorrow. Oh, well, wait a minute, no, it'll be the next day. And about a week later, you come back to get your car because everybody was too busy. Well, when a.
They give me a free loaner when they do that.
Wait a minute, when a squad car breaks down, we only have so many squad cars and we gotta keep them on the road. And they're lively if we're protecting the people with a squad car. If it snows, we have to have the trucks out there and out of there remove the snow. Now, if one mechanic, or I don't know how many you got, you got two, ain't you, John? Two, you got two. Two guys can't handle the amount of equipment that they have to work on, because they have to work on everything. So, uh, I think, I think you should start going like this, close your eyes and start thinking and say, I think I better say yes. So, uh, John, you know you got your bid and I got the, I'm, I'm along with you, because a mechanic is, you, you need them today, especially good ones. They're hard to find. Okay, that's my, that's all I gotta say.
Okay. All right, so, uh, any, um, and, and this is a recommend, manager recommended, so as presented, the mechanic is in there. Alderman Roy Wesley, did you wish to be recognized?
That's the motion I'm making.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Anything else on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposition, motion passes. Okay, with that, I think we've, uh, complete, Mr. Wilson?
Uh, that vote, my understanding, was for the green sheet, correct? Just for the mechanic?
It included the green sheet in with the fund, um.
Was that for the, for the department or just for the mechanic?
I thought it was for the department.
Everything else, so it's done.
It's done.
Done.
You are tired.
He's still in shock.
[laughing] Okay, Alderman, uh, Roy Wesley?
I do have one question, Madam German. Um, the, we're done with this budget now. I take it we're gonna get report back of how much we're in the good and everything and all the changes. We're all in the black on this total budget with all the changes. Well, he's not saying that.
You want the books left here?
Well, the, I'll give her. Uh, the, the general fund, um, without crunching all the numbers, uh, is about fifteen thousand, give or take, to the good. Um, the only other thing that, uh, changed in any of the, uh, the MFT fund went up a little bit, um, but it's still, I believe, a, a couple thousand, uh, to the good from a fund balance perspective. Um, the only other thing, uh, without looking through all my notes here that changed was the senior discount of the water fund.
My, my point is, we're not going in the reserves.
Not any more than you were before two weeks ago.
Okay, that's my point. Thank you.
And.
Mr. Wilson?
And to Alderman Coles' question, um, you will, we'll be getting sometime May, June-ish, a new shiny bound version of this with the changes and, and everything. Um, so if you do not want your draft copy anymore, we would be more than happy to take them back and save money on buying new binders next year. We will recycle the binders, so we can save costs on binder recycling.
And save money there.
Exactly.
Motion for. He makes a motion.
Is there a question, Alderman Roy Wesley?
No, I'd like to make a motion as I finish.
Okay, but items to be considered, Alderman Eugene Wesley's item.
Oh, okay.
Now, Mr. Lewitin, do you wish to be recognized?
I just wanted a sec.
We can't shut him out? We gotta, yes.
I amend that back to.
Uh, Mr. Wilson?
We're gonna be coming, uh, probably at the next committee meeting. Uh, we need to make a, a slight tweak in some of the verbiage in the vehicle sticker ordinance. Um, it's a little vague as to the placement of the vehicle sticker, so we need to clean that up, so.
Okay.
It's more of a housekeeping matter, but we do need to address it, so.
So is that like an item to be considered at future meetings?
Uh, correct, it'll be the next meeting, but yes.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, for item B, at items for future meetings, is there an item? No.
Yes, there is. What we discuss about looking across the board for a discount for other people that are unemployed and that can't afford it either. I mean, I like to look across the board, like Joe says.
What's happening?
Let's see.
Is it fair at the next finance committee meeting to have something, they already have a tangible discussion? Or no? I mean, is it too soon because you're working on the budget?
No, the, the next committee meeting's not till April fourteenth, because there's the five Thursdays in March, so we actually have three weeks until the next one, so we should be able to get something put together by then.
Okay. Thank you. Any other items for future meetings? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Aye, sir.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nice job.